... allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizen participation, any citizens wishing to be heard? Any citizens wishing to be heard?
I can't hear you.
Do you want to say anything?
Yes, I can, I'm not...
Do you want to say anything?
Did you want to speak, uh, citizens to be heard?
Well, I was just going to say a few little words, that's all.
Sure. Give your name and address, please.
You know what my address is. Charlie Grushow, I live on the corner of Polk and Michigan. Just with these kids running around here, like, uh, in Chilton, not the last stormstorm, but we had the two snowstorms close together. There was a little 12-year-old girl, dug a snow fort in the bottom of a snow pile. She crawled in there, it caved in, and she died in there. And I got them people from down the street, I think it's the, the family with the black people with the rebound van, because those kids are always all over the place. But they were up, get, on this last snowstorm, I had it pretty well cleaned out. And when I clean out the corner, I go down the terrace until I get about six feet past the fire hydrant, and I just leave that snow pile on the terrace. I don't, I ain't going to pull it off on my side, so when it melts, it runs down, it causes ice on the sidewalk. But anyways, that little kid was up there, and I had a shag, I think it was a girl, I'm not sure, that's the smallest one they got, she only stands about this high, but she started from the top down, and she dug a hole in there, in that pile, and all you could see was about this much of her leg sticking out the top, she went in at first. And, uh, anyways, the snowplow came through, I ain't saying nothing about the driver, because it was the last round of the day up there by, in my area, and, uh, they were doing the last cleanup. And he never knew that kid was up there or not, I went out to, I went outside and I yelled at her and told him or her, whatever it was, I couldn't tell, to go on home and play on your own snow pile, you don't play up here. And then I finished cleaning up what the snowplow left there for me, but if by chance, next fall, they could come up with something in that newsletter that says, keep your kids off the snow piles on the terrace, because it's, you know, I mean, death is nasty anyways, but when it's just a little kid, it just makes it even nastier.
Absolutely.
That's about all I got to say.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we had the same briefing at work where they're telling carriers to be careful, like when you're driving your mail truck, near those, not to, you know, go over any piles of snow, because kids are building their forts out in the street, and you never know when one of them slips right out in front, so again...
There's one down there on, uh, whatever street it is, it comes up from what used to be PDQ, and that old tavern there.
Yep.
When you come this way, that guy that does the repair work on the cars there?
Yeah.
There's a little dinky tunnel about this high, and about that wide, that goes under the snowbank, and, uh, I seen that this morning, and I was tempted just to walk up there and stomp on the top, you know, because it's, the snow pile ain't that high, but it's just the idea, you know, some, if it's a little kid, and the whole works caves in, he's not going to be able to push himself up to get himself out of there.
Absolutely.
But, you know, it's just, if you can put that in that, that little, whatever, newspaper thing that you put out.
Absolutely, yeah, next guy to write it down, thank you.
Okay. That's all I got.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Is there going to be anything interesting tonight?
There always is. It's very exciting.
Well, I ain't gonna, I ain't gonna say it, because I can't hear you guys talking anyways, my hearing is shut.
All right, well, thank you for coming.
Okay. There was something, I don't know what the hell, there was something else I was going to bring up real quick, but I forgot another one.
Thanks.
That was your name.
Oh, is, that, that fortune that I, that I put up there for you?
Mm-hmm.
Does that fit pretty good, or what?
Yes.
Okay. I will bring you a better one.
All right, uh, moving down to announcements, communications, does anybody have any announcements or communications? Isn't there one about North Fond du Lac?
No, but that's not...
That's unofficial?
That's unofficial, I already announced that.
Okay, okay, all right, things are moving along, though. All right, uh, President's Business and Staff Reports.
We will do a library.
We will?
Yep.
Library, please.
Anthony did it.
Sure. So Heather has been working on the annual report, that's sort of a continued effort, she's working on finishing that up. We had a board meeting last Wednesday, February 13th, and a representative from Winfax came to talk about sort of the responsibilities of the Village Board, the Library Board, and also the Library Director. There is a group painting event this Thursday at 5:00, but I believe the registration for that is full. And then they're having a book club on March 16th, um, The Pearl of China is the book that they're going to be reading. That's what I have.
Thanks. Administrator Nick?
Thank you. We did interviews last week for the, uh, two weeks ago for the pool manager, uh, we did select a new pool manager for this year, Gabby McDowell will be the pool manager. Uh, we also have, did our interviews for our, our part-time janitor position over the last month or so, we, we are, uh, we did make an offer of employment, and that person is expected to start on Wednesday of this week, or Wednesday or Thursday, depending on when we get, uh, work steps, so hopefully that'll, all go smoothly. Also, the utility auditors were here today to audit all three utilities, today and tomorrow, uh, so last week, a lot of time was spent between myself and Chris and some of the front office, uh, just in Darren, preparing reports and end-of-year stuff, and doing journal entries to make sure everything in 18 was cleaned up before they pulled the data, so, um, that's always a busy time of year for us, so that's really all I have to report.
All right, thank you. Everybody get the police activity report?
The report, yep.
All right. Fire EMS Jake?
Thank you. Uh, as you read my weekly report, the contract that originated as just Wopon has kind of grown, and now we're working through getting St. Agnes on board and then Ripon Medical Center, uh, which is huge, that'll add significant numbers to, uh, the inter-facility transports that we are doing. Essentially, what happened is the contact that we have in Wopon reached out to somebody at St. Agnes and discussed where we're at with the contract, and, um, the biggest thing for St. Agnes is finding the person in Wopon and Ripon, is finding the, the service that's the, uh, best price for the patient, so patient's advocate, um, in that, uh, in that way, so, right now, it's kind of in limbo with legal and getting the I's dotted and T's crossed, but that's kind of where we're at, so it should add a significant amount of runs in the near future. This past week, we had a issue with a fire alarm system in an apartment building in North Fond du Lac, so I met with Peter Fetters and then Tyler Badler, who's the lieutenant, and he's in charge of fire inspections. We met, figured out a plan to take care of the problem, and by, I'd say noon on Friday, uh, they had a new fire alarm panel, and everything was up and running. I just want to make everybody aware that if there are issues, uh, with fire alarm systems in a, a building that we can't inspect, it's, you have to notify the, the fire department to make us aware, and there are a couple different routes that potentially we could go, um, to make sure that it gets corrected in a timely fashion. Adam and I met with St. Agnes representatives, Dr. Larson, who is our medical director, Brenda Kissinger, who's the trauma coordinator, and Assistant Chief Jankor from City of Fond du Lac, and then one of their firefighter paramedics, to discuss changes in protocols that could be upcoming. Uh, Dr. Larson wants to roll out a new set of protocols, probably within this year at some point. The biggest things we have been looking at is our current cardiac arrest protocol, as well as stroke protocol, so those are two things that he's kind of looking at changing and modifying. A lot of it has to do with dosing of medication, and so on and so forth. And then, another big thing with Marine Park Technical College, uh, we met with them to discuss their EMS program and kind of where they're at, and how many students they potentially will have to ride along with us. Uh, right now, it's looking at the spring semester, we potentially could have two or three that want to do ride-along time. And like I said, that will definitely help out with recruitment for the department, so we're excited to move forward with that.
Just want to add to that, to compliment Jake and the fire department and Peter Fetters with the swift action they took on that fire alarm issue at that Polk's Department, there was actually a fatal fire at one of those buildings several years ago.
Yes.
And you don't, you never know if you avoided something like that, when you do something, and they did, basically, they, you took care of it one day almost, I mean, the guy was here that afternoon fixing it and putting a new panel, so it was very good, um, coordination between all the departments here, so.
Jake, is that ride-along, is that something you've always done? I don't remember ever talking about that.
No, um, I know in the past, Marine Park has, you know, kicked around the idea, but they didn't know about run volume and, you know, this, that, and the other thing, to get the people experience, so I reached out to, uh, the new associate dean, uh, and talked with her for a while about doing ride-along time, and I think we're to a point now where if 500's not running, a call our primary ambulance, then they'll be able to go on an inter-facility and get patient contact that way, and, um, after talking with the instructors that they recently hired, they prefer almost inter-facilities, because you have an extended amount of time with a patient that you can kind of learn, uh, medical history and, uh, signs and symptoms essentially of different, uh, problems that the, uh, patients may be diagnosed with, so.
Well, that makes sense, working your way up to like an emergency call, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Kind of familiarizing. Well, good, that's a good idea. Thank you. Uh, oh, it works, Darren?
Thank you. I'll probably much sum up, uh, what we've been up to in a couple of words, no one's nowhere wrong, uh, since I did, it's becoming continuous, um, what we're doing is after we, after we plow, we go back and clean cul-de-sacs and dead ends, and we're always trying to clean three corners off that are being blocked for sight because of the snow pile being so high. Other than that, like Nick mentioned, I've been fairly busy getting stuff ready for the PSC report, and, uh, we're still pushing, handing out notices to residents, uh, for meter changes, uh, we're really pushing and getting a bunch of meters changed early this year. So if a resident gets a notice on the door, we ask that they call and set up an appointment for that. That's about all I have right now.
Close the salt holding on.
We're doing fine.
Good. Thank you. Set agenda, approve the minutes of the following Village Board meeting on February 4, 2019, and approve invoices and authorized checks to be drawn on the respective funds indicated. One million, uh, general fund, $1,219,734.48. Library fund, $13,524.61. EMS fund, $3,645.91. Capital projects, $14,653.93. Water department, $8,023.10. Water department, wastewater department, $3,493.69. Community Development Authority, TIF, $19.57. Stormwater fund, $366.44 for a grand total of $1,263,461.73. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
You get second?
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Will, second by Stutz, to approve the consent agenda as read, are there any questions?
I've got one for Jake on page eight, Renards, uh, so you have some modifying exhaust for at least three of the vehicles, um, is that to make it work for our new exhaust system or something?
Correct, yeah, so the...
What does, uh, that entail? It wasn't part of the initial scope of that project, was it?
Yeah.
Yep.
It was, okay, I just, I thought that, okay, I thought it wasn't, okay.
Yep, so, uh, the pipes, uh, prior to them being modified, either came out at an angle or they came straight out, um, and they have to be, um, I want to say mid-frame and then a 90-degree angle, straight out the side, and it has to be on the passenger side, so, uh, 502 is the only one that was out the driver's side that actually had to be completely flipped to come out the, uh, passenger side, so, um, those all had to get modified to fit the exhaust system that will be coming sooner than later.
So is that project pretty much complete?
No, we, uh, have been in contact with the, uh, Magna Grip sales rep, and he has been working on making sure that the state plans, or the plans are state-approved, and everything's good to go in that fashion. Uh, I talked to him last week, and it sounds like he's 90% of the way done, he's just waiting for a signed copy to come back. Uh, and then, they have like an eight-to-12 week lead time to get the parts, and then get the parts here, and then, they have so much work right now that they're not sure if their company will be installing, or if they'll be hiring an outside company to do it, and obviously, that's paid for by them, you know, we won't cover that cost, but, um, that's kind of where we're at with it, so I'm hoping by April, it's installed.
We fresh remember, didn't we get some grant funding for that also?
Yeah, about $46,000.
Forty-eight, forty-six, forty-eight, yeah, somewhere in there.
Yeah, we had to cover two of that.
And then what, um, how much did we cover that?
Uh, like, man, I'm just pulling numbers out of the...
What, 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 what?
It was like seventeen hundred, seventeen twenty-five, I want to say.
Thousand?
No, seventeen hundred, one thousand seven hundred twenty-five, I think, and I believe it was forty-six to eighty-five.
Was it forty-eight something total, forty-five?
Forty-eight thousand total.
Forty-eight, yeah.
Forty-eight thousand?
Forty, yeah, total.
Total.
And we covered seventeen hundred of it.
That's bargain, holy man.
Yeah, it's a pretty good deal.
Looking forward to having it done, so, thank you.
Yeah, definitely.
So are the rest of the people in the building.
Yeah, I bet.
Anybody else have any questions for anyone? All right, you got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Administrative, number one, discussion of possible action on allowing North Fond du Lac Baseball and South Hall Clubs to hang sponsorship banners on the Village Park fences during the season.
Yeah, I can just briefly discuss this, it's pretty self-explanatory in the title, but also, I did a write-up, a short write-up, we had, uh, Boys Baseball contacted us, to their credit, just, you know, asking if that's okay to do, they had done it in the past, but they hadn't done it in a couple years, the way it sounds, um, and we didn't see it as being an issue, but I just thought, being that the village owns the fences at Village Park and it's Village Park, that the, I thought the Village Board should probably weigh in on this and, and allow it or not allow it, um, I don't see it as being an issue, we'll make sure, you know, Public Works will make sure that they're not damaging the fences along with, um, the timelines, you know, we're going to make sure that they're aware that it's from start of the season to the end of the season, we don't want them up year-round, we don't want tattered flags, or tattered banners hanging and blowing in the wind, um, so, I don't see any issues with it, uh, it's obviously a good funding source for them, they're looking at funding, different ways of funding, so these sponsorship banners help with that, so.
And there's criteria for the size?
Um, there really isn't, um, at this point, um, I guess that's something, to, to sit down and actually try and write a policy, I, I don't think they're going to, these banners aren't going to get, I don't think, at least the sponsorship banners, it's a discussion I can have, but I'm guessing that they're mostly those three-to-four, five-foot banners.
Yeah, seeing them, they don't usually cover more panels between the posts, yeah, so they're not...
I guess it's something, it's something we, uh, can address if it becomes an issue, in my opinion.
That's something, I was just wondering if there's anything to address that, or if Pete was concerned.
No.
Okay, cool, Mike?
I appreciate that, right in front of us, you know, if you could be in front of us and tell us, I would say, maybe we, we should modify somebody's public board for itself, make sure it's not repetitive on the, on the banners, there can't be, uh, just make sure it's not, uh, if they didn't have the timeline and then, uh, so, I like that sort of thing.
And you're okay with, I just assume we can administer that?
I would, I should look at it, it's not repetitive.
Okay.
I don't care what word it is, yeah, that, that would make more sense.
We'll take care of it, yep.
Anybody else have any other questions on this?
I do.
Got a motion, uh, to either approve or deny allowing North Fond du Lac Baseball and South Hall to pose to hang the sponsorship banners?
I'll need your motion.
You get a second?
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Randy, second by Ann, to approve, uh, letting, uh, North Fond du Lac Baseball and South Hall hang the sponsorship banners. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Discussion on, uh, replacing the boiler at the municipal building.
All right, so just, White's discussion only, we already replaced the boiler, and I know you're aware of that, um, I just wanted to give a little more detail on this and have a discussion here, and in order for me to, to do that, I felt it really should have, should have a, an agenda item, so we can talk about it freely, because it doesn't involve money. So, basi- basically what happened, and I know you've read about it in the weekly reports, um, the boiler we had is eight years old, uh, it sprung a leak in the coil, it's a, it's a, a hot water boiler, it has a coil in it, the coil is, the newer model of it, they have a 10-year warranty, the original coil that we got had a five-year warranty, and then it was prorated at that, even the new warranty is prorated. Ours lasted eight years, um, sprung a leak, the new coil to replace the, the coil inside of the existing boiler that we had would have cost us $8,500. We could get a whole new boiler installed for $12,000, with the new one, we got a 10-year warranty. The other thing we're looking into with this is, there is a possibility we have corrosive, I don't think there's a possibility, I think we have corrosive water in this building, based on, if you look at the fixtures, but that's maybe part of the issue here, so we're, we, we, we've been hired a specialist in that, that's going to treat the boiler water, they took the sample, I don't know if you have anything to report on that yet?
They took the sample, they said it would be two or three weeks before the sample was back, and you'd come back with, with an makeup of the water that we have, and a recommendation of any equipment, or how we should treat the water to be non-corrosive, to that stainless steel coil and boiler, and the boiler. So we've taken the information from the old cat iron boiler and the new stainless steel boiler to make sure our water works cleanly with both of them.
So, we enlisted AirTech, who does all of our heating and AC, that we were contracted with them for all of our services here, um, they recommended, we also did, being that we had to replace the boiler, we talked to them, we talked to their engineers about, is this the best option for us, is there a better option out there, can we spend a little more and get a better product? They said, this is your best bet, um, they recommended this, we're obviously in a little bit of a time punch, pinch, because this happened when it was like 50 below that week, so, we got it installed, I just wanted to let the board know, $11,950 was spent, we had that not, we did not have that budgeted for this year, however, I did look today just to, to update the board on the numbers, so, this is definitely, would be considered a capital expense, we could take it out of our capital reserve, we currently have about $227,000 in our capital reserve of unspent money from our 2017 and 18 borrow, um, so there's definitely that capital reserve, now, if you recall, we've talked about that money before, and there, there's a number of reasons why that's in there, some projects came in under budget, Indiana Avenue was barred for even though it was accessible, and we, there's no other way to do it, um, we made quite a bit of interest on our money last year, uh, so you add all that together, we made like $13,000 of interest on that money, so, in the end, we have $227,000, obviously, we have the money to cover in our capital, that's where we'll charge it, where we've charged it to, um, what this $227,000 will do is, basically, we'll reduce our borrow for 19 and 20, you know, if we need a million dollars for 19, 20, we'll reduce it by the 200,000 or whatever we feel comfortable with, we'll probably keep a little capital reserve, because we want some money there in case something like this comes up again, but we definitely have the money to cover it in that, in that regard, so.
Some questions for you, other, existing system, is there any kind of chemical pot feeder, or anything on that system at all?
No pot feeder or anything, that's part of the equipment that we're probably going to need to, wait in place.
Okay, who's the chemical company you're dealing with?
I knew you were going to ask that, they're out in Nina, I don't recall the name right now.
Okay, if you need another resource, I, I know, I'm not, but if you want to...
This is one that AirTech has dealt with in the past.
Okay, fair enough, yeah, you had to have that, so, okay, you don't know anything, so, okay, awesome.
The, just to add to that, too, they are taking, they took, the, the other reason, part of the reason we went with the same boiler, too, is there are some salvageable parts off of the other boiler, um, they are taking the coil back to their lab to cut it apart, test it, look at it, see why it failed, and there's a possibility that they might prorate some sort of warranty for it, but I doubt that it would happen, so, really nothing more than just discussion, just to inform the board.
Cool, well, thanks for letting us know, appreciate that. And this one's working okay?
Feels good, yep, it's working good.
All right, moving on to, uh, item three, discussion on replacing a variable frequency drive at well number four.
We have one for Darren, too, there. Same issue here, uh, this, we have not purchased yet, but I just wanted to inform the board of this, now, this is the water utility's separate, completely separate enterprise fund, which we really, um, definitely have the money and the savings to, to cover this, I just wanted to inform the board, and, just because it's another, you know, $22,000 unexpected expense in our water utility, um, basically, there, very quickly, there's three booster pumps in our system that give us our water pressure, they either pump it up into the water tower to give us our pressure, or if the, they can't keep up, these booster pumps are able to, to boost our pressure by themselves, each one of those has a variable frequency drive attached to it, which ramps it up, ramps it down, so to speak, one of them has failed, um, and Darren can get into a lot more details about it, I don't know that we need to go there, than, other than, it failed, it would cost us $27,000 for a brand-new one, $28,000 for a new one normally, we can get a refurbished one for $21,000, um, the company we're working with, because this is probably a little premature, should have lasted a little longer, they're going to, they're willing to install it, um, not install, but 22,350, that's where those three bolded numbers in there, estimated labor between 1,500 and 40 and $2,000, again, this is something, uh, we need to get done, it's a, it's an important part of our water system, obviously, luckily, we have two others at this point, so, um, we don't want to take a chance with, with running too long without that, so this is something we're going to move forward with, um, the other thing to note on this is, we did start an insurance claim, in the event that there might have been, there's some electricals, things going on with this, that there could have been a brownout or a lightning strike type issue that caused this, so, we started that process, it's going to take a while for the, for them to, to find out if that's what caused it, when they take it apart and look at it and diagnose that, but we did start that process also. Anything added to that, Darren?
Yeah, uh, the refurbished unit would only come with a short warranty, and that's why we opted to go to the replacement unit, that comes with a full warranty, um...
How long is that?
That is prorated over eight years, and the refurbished one will only have a two-year warranty associated with that. I think it's very, uh, noble of the company that we deal with, AVB, uh, to, uh, give us a break right off the bat, because this unit was only 10 years old, and they're telling me that they should last up to 20 years, so it was probably half light, so they're giving us that roughly $5,054 off, um, the price right off the front, and they're going to take, that's including them taking the old one and diagnosing what happened to it, what failed, they're going to do that at no cost.
Yes, yes.
Just a quick question, uh, where did you say the funding source was coming out? Utility?
Why, utility, yep.
What did he, okay, thank you.
Um, just, Darren, just to clarify, and I'm just wondering, are you getting this mixed up with the furnace, but it, on the bottom here, it says there's a two-year factory warranty versus a one-year on the refurb.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I think you were mixing the two, yeah, because the boiler's eight.
Yeah, two years.
Eight years old, yep.
So, does anybody have any other questions, uh, this item? All right.
Yeah, there is, and I, and I don't, I don't want to...
Well, I appreciate you bringing it to the board, let us know what's going on.
I know I'm bringing it to you without any action or anything, but I feel like this is the proper way to discuss it, so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Keep us all on the...
Thank you.
Uh, ordinances, number one, discussion, discussion of possible action on ordinance 2019-3, and ordinance amending the Village North Fond du Lac ordinance 9.10, so, four heating facility, second reading.
This is, if you recall, we, we had the first reading last time, obviously, um, this is about, there's a couple of temperature changes in the state code versus what our code read, just an update, very easy update, second reading.
Anybody have any questions on this ordinance?
I only have one question, is, did anybody call and ask about this ordinance at all? I mean, does anybody question what you're doing here? It doesn't look, I look, it looks reasonable to me, but has anybody called and said they have an issue with it, but actually, you're making it better?
Making it state code.
State code, but it also make a little less restrictive, before the numbers were pretty high, so, okay, I'm good.
All right, so it's second reading, so we need action on, taking that motion to approve this ordinance.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 2019-03, ordinance amending 9.10 bracket four heating facilities.
Second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Price, second by Will, to approve ordinance 2019-3, need a rule call, please.
King has excused Price.
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Stutz?[1760.62] Will?
Yes.
Number two, discussion and possible action on ordinance twenty nineteen dash four. An ordinance amending Village North Fanilac ordinance nine point one four and nine point one five safety from fire and smoke detectors. First reading, Jake.
Thank you. So two or three kind of go together hand in hand. But Peter Fetters and I sat down and discussed creating a chapter for fires and fire prevention to kind of outline all the ordinances that we have and include a more unified code structure with what the city of Fanilac uses. So and these ordinances are used kind of in our region by everybody. And we currently don't have anything, and it definitely helps us out in situations like what we had this past week where we can go there and say, this is what you have to do. Here's our ordinance that backs us up. And whereas essentially what we do now is go through a fire code book, get the same thing out, say, this is what we can enforce. And instead, it's kind of written down right in front of them. And, you know, if somebody were to move into the village or purchase a apartment building or is a property manager for an apartment building, they would be able to pick this up and say, this is what I have to follow to make sure that everything is by code essentially. Does anyone have any specific questions on this, I guess?
Pam?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Okay.
I just so just the first one is just clerical, I guess. I think that like nine dot fifteen, so like the second page of that first one, I think it's should be subsection one, not subsection two. And then I think that the first two lines are duplicated. It says.
Wait a second, where are you at? Sorry. What page on the PDF?
Twenty six.
Twenty six, something on.
Yeah, right there. I think that should be a one, not a two.
Well, you got way back for that.
Yeah, but I don't.
You're right.
I think it's.
Nine fifteen one, right?
Yeah. And the first sentence is duplicated. It says smoke alarms and carbon monoxide. Then it said smoke alarms and carbon monoxide.
Nine point one five should be deleted. So then it should be one would be.
Oh, cooking and heating equipment. So it's nine fourteen.
Yep.
Two.
So you're this is amending nine point one four and nine point one five.
Okay.
Combine them.
Okay.
Got it. So nine that nine fifteen, the title nine fifteen smoke detector should be struck.
Yeah, it should be struck.
All right, that's just a word.
And then the first is duplicated.
Yeah, that's that is the title for the. So I'll have it bolded.
Sure, but it does that's not a sentence, I don't think.
It's the title.
No.
It's the title for the number two?
Yeah, I know, but it is duplicated. That would take you take one of those out.
Yeah.
Oh, you're seeing the second one's not a sentence.
Right.
Yeah.
Should be comma. Yep.
Something.
Yep, we'll clean that up. So just to clarify, I think what what should be done here is the first line should be bolded. The second line should I don't think we need to change it. I think we just need to put a comma after dwellings. Smoke alarm and carbon monoxide alarms in one and two family dwellings, except as otherwise specified in this chapter.
Yeah.
Or hereby adopted and by reference, yeah.
Do you have anything else, Sam?
Yeah. Well, so I'm seventeen seventeen two subsection two. It says that you would you're gonna, I guess, inspect on an annual basis or more frequently as determined by the fire chief? I guess I don't know. Is it who it who are you going to inspect?
We have a hundred and fifty eight inspectable buildings in North Fanilac, so we inspect them every six months. They're supposed to be inspected.
Do you think does it say in here somewhere which buildings you're going to be inspecting?
Any inspectable building.
Does it say that?
Per essentially SPS three fourteen point oh one, which is Wisconsin Administration Code.
So it's.
That lines out what we can and cannot inspect.
Okay.
But I I see what you're saying, and that maybe we could just add to that. For fire chief, point personnel shall inspect or cause to be inspected all premises. On periodic basis, all Jake, could we add something that there would make sense in front of premises?
Yeah, I can kind of get an outline from the three fourteen oh one.
Sure.
All inspectable.
Inspectable premises, something to that effect.
Yeah, I just didn't know what I didn't think.
No, you're right. As I read it to it, kind of it is kind of vague there.
So then I had seventeen eight.
Any building that's considered an occupancy that has a a occupancy load is inspectable, if that makes sense. So like.
Okay, so on.
Yeah.
Any call.
Yeah.
What's a occupancy load?
Which is pretty far down. Like if we have, let's say, Jen's Bar. There's a max amount of people that can go there at max capacity, so it's forty-nine. So any structure that, you know, has occupancy in North Fanilac would be inspectable, if that makes sense.
Sure.
So that's kind of how it's saying.
So we just have to somehow add.
Which we could, yeah, I could kind of draw it out a little bit.
Summarize that.
Yeah.
Sure.
Then seventeen eight subsection one subsection B. I don't know. I guess who who would that be? So it's under fire extinguisher equipment, then fire extinguisher equipment. It says the owner, agent, or manager of every theater and public and place of public entertainment shall employ a person of competency satisfactory to the chief who during every performance or public assemblage then the building or structure should be on duty to take charge of the fire extinguisher equipment.
Yep.
So is that like if the school has a movie theater, then they have to have somebody who knows how to use the fire equipment or I mean, who is that?
Yeah, so usually they have like a chaperone of those events or somebody that's in charge of those events. And typically, those people know how to, you know, where pull stations are, exit routes for, you know, that's specific. If it's a PA area at a school, so they know how to get out, they'll know how to use fire extinguishers. They know how to get out through, you know, both rough, especially at the high school, and, you know, through the first floor exits and from the second floor to get out. So it's pretty normal standard to have that.
Okay. Then seven eight two, I was sort of confused by this because in section B, it says a sprinkler system cannot be removed for any reason. And then C, it says you may not remove it without making other provisions. And then on E, it says once the system is out of service. And then when it seems like first, it says you can never take it out, which I don't understand. And then it says if you're going to take it out, you have to tell us, is what it seems like to me. I guess I don't know if you could sort of explain that.
Page thirty-one.
Yeah, sprinkler and stand pipe systems. I don't know what a stand pipe system is either.
So what so what were your?
Well, so in like subsection B, any sprinkler system in existence on or after the effective date shall not be removed or taken out of service for any reason, including vacating of the premise or abandonment, building ownership, or change of building use.
Sure.
Then if you go to C, owner occupy may not remove the system without making other fire protection subsystem suitable. But you just said you can never remove it, and now it says if you're going to remove it, you have to make.
So a provision to that would be a fire watch. We can require a a structure to have a twenty-four hour fire watch. So that would be one of those kinds of provisions that we can do, or you can rid of occupancy. So you can pull occupancy out of the structure.
But I'm just saying B, it says you can never remove it. It shall not be removed or taken out of service for any reason. And then the next one, you're saying, well, for if you're going to do it for this reason, tell us. I would say I don't know how you can say you're going to do it. You can never do it. And then if you're going to do it, let us know.
But there's there's going to be times where, let's say, especially right now, when you have deep freeze that's negative fifty and then it gets up to, you know, thirty or forty, you're going to have these pipes that are going to freeze. And then usually the problem doesn't happen until the thaw's back out. So then it'll thaw back out, there'll be a crack in the pipe, and they're going to have to shut the system down. So there has to be a way for them to do that. So if they come to us and say, we have to shut our system down for, let's say, seventy-two hours for them to replace a hundred feet of piping. They can come to us, let us know that, and then we can give them a plan on how there's going to be some sort of fire watch, you know, essentially.
But I don't know if we should say for service for any reason.
Uh, that's.
Or accept or something.
I think that's pretty important.
But you just said that if it has a pipe, you can take it out of service. But you in the other breath, you said you can never take it out of service ever.
But under C, it says without making other fire prevention provisions suitable to and approved by the fire chief. So there's always an exception to everything. There's always an exception. So I mean, if if you need to make an exception like Jake just said, I mean, then.
So it's saying that they can't take it out of service unless they notify us within forty-eight hours in advance, correct?
But at first, it says you can't take it out of service for any reason. I guess I would say you're saying you can never take it out of service. And then and then in the next breath, you're saying if you're going to take it out of service, do this. So maybe you could say accept for or if you, you know.
Yeah, it doesn't.
It just seemed like it's.
But I mean, it does go.
It kind of is, cool.
Yeah, if you read on in B, yeah, if you're reading the B, I mean, it does say it does kind of go on to say the system may be taken out of. If it must be taken out of service temporarily, the owner should notify the north fanilac.
Then should you say it should never be taken out of service for any reason? If in the next sentence, you say if the fire protection must be taken out of service? It just seems.
I think it reiterates that they really should never take it out of service. And if they absolutely must, then they have to notify us forty-eight hours in advance.
Well, why say should never or something like that? But it says that you must never.
Well, shall, I mean.
I mean, example, we have like seventeen systems, you know, private.
Yep.
There's times we'll take them out of service for sometimes an hour or sometimes maybe have any the service work for.
Yeah.
Annual maintenance on the check piles or the the major check they have to place in every five years. So there's times if you take them out of service, then we don't notify the fire department. Service company comes in and does that work, so there's there's no in your language. I don't see it for for service work. You'll take that system out of work. I mean, that's I understand what you're saying. It's it's pretty restrictive, but never is never. And there's times for you to.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it says for any reason.
Uh, it's.
We got it out this last week and there was a sprinkler head break.
Yeah. The issue with that is, you know, if there's a system that's down, right, and there's this FDC or a connection that we have on the exterior of the building and we're not notified that that system is not functioning, and we go hook up to that system and we're expecting there to be, you know, twenty gallons of water coming out of every single sprinkler head, and that's not happening, that's a huge problem.
What if how about any reason without notifying the fire department or something like that?
I think it says that.
But it does say that. I I I think it might I know what you're saying.
If the fire protection service system needs to be out of service temporarily, the owner shall notify the North Fanilac Fire Department in writing at least forty-eight hours.
Yes.
Prior to that, so.
But the sentence right before that says you shall not be removed or taken out of service for any reason.
Except as provided below this.
Yes.
How would we say that?
Yes.
For any reason, but it says if it needs to be temporarily, so it is covered because it says for any reason, but.
Let's just if we add expect this provided below it, I think it solves it all, doesn't it? If we just say shall not be removed or taken out of service for any reason, except including vacant premises or abandonment, building ownership change or building use, except as provided below. Then.
The the next thing where it says it can take you out of service temporarily. Same, it's in the same, it's top the next page. So it starts at bottom of thirty-one, continues at the top of thirty-two. So top system must be taken out of service. If it must be taken out of service temporarily, the owner must notify the North Fanilac Fire Department in writing at least forty-eight hours in advance.
I understand discussing with me out of service, but if they're servicing and I did that for a time, I'm a contractor, you're going to have to possess it for twelve hours. He's supposed to call you unless he knows that you have.
He should.
He should. I mean, it's. It's important. It really is important.
Mike, in North Fanilac, we do things by the block.
You talk to JF Aaron and all those guys?
We actually JF Aaron was here on February or where are we? Yeah, we're in February. On the.
Yeah, that's.
Second.
I just thought it was.
And did a presentation, and we talked about that for quite a while about this specifically.
Did JF Aaron help this morning fix it on the. How do you tell? I'll ask him. I'll ask JF Aaron if he notified or will notify. I bet you did.
This is I copied and pasted a lot of this from the city that's.
I think you leave nothing out of service, you know, for service. I understand if it's down, dead in the water, a couple of leaves, we have nothing.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they'll most likely if they're there doing service, they can reset that system. So, you know, it they'd be able to activate it. If they're literally hands on there, they'll be able to unless there's a major malfunction, you know.
Yeah, just a couple more, sorry. It talks about manufactured homes and that tenants will be instructed that seventeen ten subsection two.
Yep.
I was just wondering what that would be. Community management shall instruct its staff and the youth. I guess it's staff, not it's tenants, I suppose. Tenant shall be instructed in applicable fire prevention and fire protection rules. I guess how do you what do they do?
We talk with typically management at the local mobile home parks.
But they're supposed to tell their tenant something then? Is is that requirement annual or I guess what is the expectation?
No, there's no yearly set on it. It essentially goes over if there's something that happens in a mobile home, what you should be doing. So a lot of it has a lot of this has to do with distance apart, making sure that these structures aren't right next to each other. And.
Do you think we need that tenants shall be instructed in applicable fire protection and fire protection rules?
I think so, yeah, that they should be able instructed by on how to use equipment that typically those mobile homes are either there or are purchased through the the company that owns the park.
Who's supposed who's supposed to be instructing them then?
Community management.
Us?
No, community management. It says all the mobile home parks are community, so they're managed by Flood out here.
Okay.
That's their management, not ours.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, it just seems sort of general. It doesn't really tell them what to do or when to do it or how often to do it or who to do it with. I guess I just thought it was sort of confusing.
They have they have pretty strict rules out there. I mean, if.
If they, I mean, I'm hoping they keep some sort of record under training. I mean, because if something happens, you know, they may be held accountable if they're not training their their the proper people.
Right.
So I am I'm hoping that they keep keep their training records on the day.
I mean, all we can do is create this, and it's up to them to enforce it. So that's that's on their community and Flood. They and they've since they've got their new leadership out there, they they've stepped up enforcement of property stuff. And so, I mean, if they're if they're supposed to be doing something, we can only give them what they need to be doing, and then they take it from there, and that's on them, so.
Okay.
Eric Flood's really easy to work with.
I think the sentiment of this is trying to say, and in my opinion, is we're supposed to relate to community management of what they should be doing. And this and it's kind of saying to them, and you should be informing your tenants of what we're telling you.
Okay.
That's kind of what it's trying to say, in my opinion.
Okay. Three A, I think it is the first sentence. The arrangement of each manufactured home community shall meet the authority responsible. Is it with the authority responsible? I mean, that's just the type of wording maybe. Shall meet with. I guess it doesn't matter. Whatever's fine.
Shall meet the authority responsible.
I guess it sounds.
Right.
We can skip that one.
Okay.
I guess number nine, it says you can't store anything in a accessory building.
This is remember, this is just in a mobile home park.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if they have a lawnmower and gas or like a propane tank, they can't store.
They shouldn't be stored inside.
So if they have a lawnmower, they're supposed to store it up.
Unless they have a.
Like if is this a shed or something like that?
Oh, this is for space underneath a manufactured home accessory building or structures.
Is an accessory building a shed?
Yeah.
Or are they talking about space under an accessory building?
Yeah, that's what I was just trying to. Yeah, there too.
That's what I'm.
Is there space under an accessory building?
There can.
Yeah.
Sure.
A shed. Looks like this much.
But that's what I think that's what it's trying to say, and I don't think it says it very clearly. Space under manufactured homes, accessory buildings, or structures. I think it's talking about the space underneath all three of them.
Okay. I mean, that makes sense. Don't store your lawnmower underneath your house.
Which we do find things underneath.
Yeah.
But it's more flammable liquid, your gas.
Sure, sure, sure. I know, I know. It does say gasoline powered equipment.
Yeah.
Okay. No, that's fine. I get that. Remove so equipped. I think the last this is dumb, but the eleven, the last sentence. The equipment is mandatory and shall be maintained in any existing manufactured home not so equipped. Wouldn't it be in all manufactured homes, whether you had it in there or not? The equipment they're talking about, smoke detectors, the equipment is mandatory and shall be maintained in any existing. The equipment they're talking about, smoke detectors, the equipment is mandatory and shall be maintained in any existing manufactured home.
But it doesn't have them.
But don't all houses need them, though? If you don't have them, you need them?
Some of the newer ones come with them, but, so, saying this equipment is mandatory, shall be maintained in any existing manufactured home not so equipped, so they're talking about the old ones that are outdated, so it's mandatory, and some of the new ones just come with it, some of the old ones need to have it if they don't have it.
New ones come with, like, fire, smoke detectors?
Sometimes.
Sometimes they're built in, yeah.
They don't really need to...
A lot of the newer ones have them, where they're all linked together, so on detector alarms, and then they all do.
And then seventeen twelve, four, and five are the same thing, I think.
We really wanted to get to that point. We'll save that one of them.
And then, um, just seventeen fifteen.
Seventeen twelve, you said?
Yeah, four and five are the same thing.
Four and five are the same.
Page thirty-five.
I don't have that, Mike.
Then I just had a question about seventeen fifteen one, subsection C. It says that a permit is required for storage of liquefied petroleum gas. Is that, that's not a, for your gas grill, though, isn't that an LP tank, though? Is that something different?
Larger than fifty-five gallons?
No, C, though, C doesn't say larger than, storage of liquefied, I was just wondering if that's just what compressional? Does it just says flammable and combustible storage of flammable liquids in tanks? Are those all separate, or that's the same, and they're all, they all apply?
I'll have to talk to Peter Fetters on that to get clarification, but it should be anything larger than fifty-five gallons above, or underground, and then... So on and so forth, so that should essentially be the same across the board. Anything big, larger than fifty-five gallons. And then combustible liquid, larger than two hundred and seventy-five gallons.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. That was all I had.
Any other questions, Mike?
Well, seventeen fourteen, storage of used cars excessive, I understand garage, right, have some like that, but is this for residential, too? Can we allow to...
Well, the, there's two ordinances that are gonna come into play there. This one is more of the fire-related code, this is looking at where does the fire danger exist. We have another code of storage of, you know, materials for property maintenance issues, that one, in a residential district, if they have ten tires laying outside, they're, they're gonna be violating the property maintenance issue. This is looking at more of this fire hazard, and at the hundred, I guess, is where it kicks in. Yeah, I would, yeah.
Any else, Mike? Anybody have any other questions on ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero four?
I have a question. Are we comfortable with making proposed changes and calling this the first reading, or would you like to come back, approve the changes as the first reading and go on?
We should go, uh...
Come back with a first reading, alright.
Can you say it?
Oh, uh...
We'll come back with another first reading after we make these changes next time.
I would like you to look into also the...
Service, when someone's servicing, is that, is that a normal practice that, didn't you have to notify the contractors also when they, they worked on a system, so I'd like to know.
Of the proper procedures, I think.
Two and three. Two and three.
If you look under, or on page thirty-five, when it goes over LP gas containers, it kinda goes over a residential structure, what you have to do with them, if that makes sense.
Yeah, we'll just clean up that, just to verify what, what we're talking about there, if it's fifty-five gallons or more, or whatever.
Yeah.
We already did both of them, really, we can just postpone two and three, I believe.
Okay, so, board's pleasure that we postponed, looking at ordinance twenty nineteen dash four, twenty nineteen dash five, so we can make that, we'll postpone, and we'll discuss them in the future. You got five with everybody?
Yeah.
We'll just postpone, not table, postpone.
Got it.
Alright. Communications, I just have one, and, and Mike, if you wanna let Heather know, we appreciate the invite to the last library board meeting, it's very informative, and I don't know, maybe that sheet that we got from Mark Aaron, we can put that, like, in the trustee packet, you know, or, or a new, like, something that's coming out, just so they understand that, so, yeah, it was very informative, so good discussion there, so that was, that was nice, that we were invited, so it was like me and Nick, and then Mike Will is an advisory for the county board, and Anne is our, our trustee that sits on that board, so we have good representation.
I mean, it was just a matter of having a discussion, and maybe understanding the rules a little bit more, you know, everybody has a different role in the village board, and the county, and and the library board, and they wanna open up the conversation, or communicate better with the village board, so that maybe we can avoid some problems down the road, so I think it was a good open discussion, so I'll just, and that's one of their goals, issues, to try to, to keep better with the village board, so.
Alright, any other communications? Any new, oh, I'm sorry, Jake?
Yeah, there's a, I forgot to bring this up before, there's an AMSEC meeting, uh, February twenty-first, twenty-first, sorry, at six thirty PM at the Town of Friendship Town Hall.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else on our communications? Uh, moving on to new business, any new business? Uh, go into closed session, need a motion to go into closed session, please.
I make a motion to go into closed session, to this, discussion of personnel issue under Wisconsin State Statute nineteen dot eighty-five, subsection one, subsection C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. I AFF contract.
Alright, can I get a second?
I'll start, man.
Got a motion by Price, got a second by Stutz, to go into closed session. Can I get a roll call, please?
King is excused, Price.
Yes.
Streeter?
Yes.
Stutz?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
We have a closed session.